I'd like to start off by saying thank you to all of our candidates that have joined us this morning. First, of course, will be the city council candidates. Then we have an opportunity where you can have some meet and greet with them, as well as our mayoral candidates that will be coming on later in the program. But during that time, we take a small break. We have a couple of food truck vendors outside, right outside this side door, so you can actually grab a bite to eat, come back inside, sit down and have a casual time with your candidates here for council, as well as me. I'd like to make a quick reminder to everyone that if you could silence your cell phones during the event, so there won't be any interruptions. Also, I'd like to make a notion to the fact that we have tables along either side where candidates have some of their information, and also index cards for questions for the candidates. This is an audience participation forum, so we're encouraging you to come up with some questions that will be also offered to the candidates during the forum. There are also some vendors at the back of the room that have come today to offer their wares, as well as information about their businesses. This is all about business. We are definitely a group of people that are concerned about the business and the business retention, business attraction, and also job growth here in the city of Portsmouth. So that leads me to also invite you to take the time, Mr. Stossen in the back, also has a program that she's working on called "The Future Workshop," coming up November 10th. This is trying to build one Portsmouth, of course, and also work on our comprehensive plans to become more attractive to businesses, as well as residents alike. So, without further ado, I would also bring up to the podium here Ms. Tracy Lathan, Integrity Solutions. Of course, she has a business here in the Midtown section of the city, and she will be introducing our moderator and further candidates. Ms. Tracy?
Okay, Ted isn't much talk. Good morning, everybody. My name is Tracy Lathan. I'm the owner of Integrity Security Services here at Midtown Portsmouth and co-chair of Portsmouth Division Economic and Government Affairs Committee. On behalf of Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce and our partners, the League of Women Voters for South Hampton Roads, the Old Town Business Association, and the Midtown Business Association, I want to welcome you to the day's candidate forum. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to introduce you to today's candidates. We have with us today James Bailey, Mr. Stossen, he's not here, okay, yeah, alright. Paul Battle, Leon Boer, Nathan Clark, Mark Gudalde, Mr. Trovsky, Lisa Lucas Burke, Elizabeth Simmons, Kathy Rabel, Donna Bigsai, and Ray Smith. Let's give them all a round of applause. And at this time, I'm going to turn over the podium to Ms. Carol Garrison from the League of Women Voters, South Hampton Roads, to state the forum rules.
Hello. I just wanted to mention, this room, it goes a lot, so, you know, keep the whispering down because it will transfer to this whole room. Our opening closing statements will be one minute for each candidate. The order was drawn beforehand, and the candidates will be presenting their opening statements in the order from candidate one to the end. Closing statements will be given in reverse order. The moderator will serve the questions prepared by the committee of the sponsor of our committee. Real questions from the audience will be collected by the committee and asked as time commence. Questions will be asked of each candidate. No question will be candidate's to elect. So when you write your questions, make sure you address the entire room. Candidates will make their responses to the questions in the same number order, starting with candidate after candidate's statement. Starting with candidate number two, it's only down, and then you can hit number three, and so forth. Candidates have one minute to respond to each question. Mr. Mark will be holding up the time cards, and he will give them a 15-second warning when their time is about to end. And when their time expires, he will hold up the red sign. Hopefully, we won't have to read the way. Candidates are allowed to bring notes to the lectern, and they can make notes, but they aren't allowed to bring a call or charge, that type of thing. The audience were asked into a frame from a pause with demonstrations of support or dissatisfaction for candidates on an issue. Applause appropriate in the welcoming and in the closing. That allows us to get as many questions as possible. Make sure to have no signs or buttons. There are tables in the back with information from the candidates if you would like further information. Cell phones in the hall, please turn them off. No flash cameras, video equipment, or cellphone recording unless you know already approved. Candidates will all be addressed as Mr. and Miss. There will be no substitutions for any candidates. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator from South Hampton Roads, Ms. Martha Rollins.
Thank you. We're ready. We've been looking forward to this. We're ready to thank all the candidates for their participation, and we thank the voters for their interest. Question number one. And the first question will be to Mr. Clark, and then you'll go across for one-minute response. What do you believe to be the most pressing concerns for the Portsmouth business community?
Good morning. What I think, as far as the most difficult place facing the business community right now is such a negative reception and situations that we have in the city. We need to promote ourselves, you know, increase our safety, increase our public safety right now here. Because the businesses, unless we have a safe environment and we put that reception out, we're not going to attract customers to come to our businesses, as well as new businesses that we practically need in the city of Portsmouth. So I think that's one of the biggest things, because these are our reception at this time.
Mr. Gudalde, Mr. Trovsky?
Thank you. From my perspective, it appears that the major concerns of the business community are rational regulatory environment, a stable tax rate, and sufficient business to allow them to thrive. I think that it is necessary for us to do a top-down review of what it takes to get a business off the ground, what we are asking our businesses to do that may not be necessary, and find a way to reform the startup process for new businesses.
I thought I'd go first. I didn't know if there were questions. But anyway. What do you believe to be the most pressing concerns for the Portsmouth business community?
Well, I think there's probably a vision to start with. As they all have different sides, committees, that all engage with each other. So we need a vision that...
Good morning. I believe that the most pressing issue that Portsmouth faces in relation to its business community is our image. Both our image within the business community, the image of City Hall by business community, and also the image of Portsmouth in the region and beyond. Beyond that, in terms of starting a new business, the process needs to be streamlined. It's extremely difficult to open a new business in Portsmouth, and it might be helpful if we had a more streamlined process with perhaps some kind of a concierge service to assist businesses to get through that process. What we can do back, we need to improve our image, and that starts with city council.
Thank you. Ms. Lucas Burke?
Yes. I believe that we need to have some more education for business owners who are interested in opening new businesses on the city of Portsmouth. Our general commerce working with our development authority would be a great asset to persons interested in starting new businesses to have the tools to introduce them to the process of what they need to do, any paperwork, and any incentives that may be available to help them to begin their business, whether they're a small business, a minority, or otherwise. I believe in the education about the process. We need the community to know that we are a local business, and that we welcome them here in the city of Portsmouth. Marketing also will be a great asset to help them to sustain their businesses once they are started. So let them know that they do have the support of the community to do business here in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. One of the main things that I haven't seen happen on council before is is foster user-friendly, environment downtown, various departments, offices to help them to go in. I believe that's the number one thing that we have to improve and look at. A lot of the excess fees and unnecessary fees that we charge just to make applications to do business. Secondly, will be the image, and then on long-term, we've got to do something about these tolls. These tolls are just killing the city overall.
Thank you. Mr. Battle?
We could try to program someone to that forum and offer, well, to give upfront funding to the businesses that are just starting, small businesses. What they found, they found that the revenues can far surpass what they spend in helping the business get started. Also, we need to do a better marketing job. We need to be regularly with the businesses as to ask them how we can amplify their savings and go along and do what's best we can to make sure that they're on their path.
Thank you. The biggest impediment to increased business in the city, I believe, is having a stable government. I can't tell you how many businesses I have spoken with in the last 10 years, be they small startups or large corporations. The first question they ask is, how stable is the government? That's why this election is so important. You need folks who understand how to operate civilly and transparently, and that you can be proud of when the WNYC News puts the council meeting on the screen, that you can be proud of, because that's the image of the city, is those council meetings and school board meetings. And I am always defending to the business community what it's like to really operate a business in the city. And I believe stable government is the most important option.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
I'd like to share with you, as I listen to the candidates, I'm running for city council because I don't want to sell your intelligence. We have an educational system that's in place. There are city council people who are worried and sorry. There are people who wish to push the issue. However, the biggest problem we are having in Portsmouth is the image that we present. We are not presenting a positive image. I have not heard anyone talk about the statue downtown, or about the city hall statue down there, happening with, don't you think, that overall, overall, Portsmouth and every place else? I oppose that. I will not review, I will not do anything to move that statue, because it's a part of history. Therefore, as a city council person, I want to develop, I don't want to go back and try to create something that cannot be corrected. So I'm saying, for the business and Portsmouth concern, no business bank allows to tell them about it. However, I have the expertise to do so.
Thank you. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce, let the candidates introduce themselves. And because Mr. Boer is sitting out there, what do you think, to vote first?
Yes, my name is Leon J. Boer. I've been at Portsmouth all of my life. I've been very active in the city of Portsmouth. I love this town. I didn't move here until I went to city council. I ran the doors, not a city official, but I have not had something to do with the election, even though I take time for minds. However, I know what I have to offer, that's honesty. That's what we need in Portsmouth. I'm not a racist, I'm going to make that point clear. And I'm definitely not an upper talk. I don't play upper talk. I don't guess, maybe, no, maybe I'm listening. I mean it from my heart. If you vote for me to be the city council person, I'm going to be honest with you. If you want to know anything about me, ask any of your city officials. I don't want to call that name. They ought to be able to call my name, because I have them get there. Nevertheless, it would not be hard to go downtown and say, hey, go to a judge, call my attorney, turn around and do, say, do you know Boer? Yes. School teachers, school? Yes. Thank you so very much.
Good morning. My name is Nathan Clark. And first, I want to thank everybody for taking the time out of Saturday to come out here and listen to us and hear some of our business and views. I am Portsmouth native. I grew up here in the city of Portsmouth. I grew up in the section of Port North. I attended Portsmouth Public Schools. I graduated high school in high school. And following that, I began working for the city of Portsmouth at the age of 18. It's been 28 years ago I started as a sheriff, deputy sheriff, sheriff's department, and went to the police department, and I've also served on the fire department. So I have a wide variety of public safety in all three departments within this city. So I'm coming out, you know, with this information. I want to work with the community and city and organizations like this to try to move the city forward. And I know we only have one minute, so it's very short. I'm getting ready to get to 15-second warning, so I'll just say thank you.
Good morning. I appreciate the considerable effort that goes into pulling one of these forums together. And I appreciate the thought and planning that is part of any such undertaking. But I want to tell you that this is an artificial referendum. And the real work of a elected representative is to consider a mountain of data that comes before him or her, and to listen, most importantly, to listen to the people that he or she wants to represent. I have experience in both of those areas. For 20 years, I have haunted city council. I've gone to more meetings than anybody else on this dais and have studied the background material. So I'm ready to go to vote for you, my neighbor. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Donna Saele, and I'm asking you to vote for me on November 8. I have exchanged my private life for one of public service every day. I work on government issues and have gone to the general assembly in the past and imposed a transportation bill, this bill in the past. I plan to go as well next year. Currently, I go to the regional meetings of the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization and speak on issues that concern the people of Portsmouth. In fact, I put together the organization chart of the AGR TPO. The regional committees are run by paid or appointed staff. These officials will take away all our rights to self-government. I believe it is my duty to give all of myself to serve you and bring back government to the people. Please vote for me, Donna Saele, November 8.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Good morning. My name is Kathy Rabel. I'm grateful for this opportunity to come before you. I'm a lifelong resident of Portsmouth, Virginia. And frankly, I'm running for city council because I got tired of all the negativity about Portsmouth. This is my hometown. I grew up here. I graduated from Wilson High School. And I believe that we can do better. So I put myself out there. I would like to bring civility, transparency, and accountability back to the governing process. And I'm running on a platform of strong economic development to bring better-paying jobs to the city of Portsmouth, strong education for our children, and also for families wishing to move to Portsmouth, and also public safety, because without public safety, none of the rest of it matters. I ask for your vote on November 8, and I thank you for having me.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Ms. Simmons Burke, and I am asking for your vote on November 8. I'm a compassionate person there, and I'm also a person who is capable of working with a diverse group of people. My experience spans over 20 years in the community, community involvement and public service. I was appointed by the Portsmouth City Council in 2010 to serve on the Economic Development Authority, where I am still a commissioner there. So I have a passion for economic development, ensuring that we have our business retention and an opportunity to create new businesses. Also, I get more to work with council colleagues to ensure that our public safety, fire anthems are safe for our communities. And of course, education is important to me, because I am a product of the Wilson Public Schools, and I want our children to have the same kind of successes that I have had to be successful in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Good morning. I've been to the table. I've been involved with city government and politics since I was a student in high school. I'm born and raised in Portsmouth. I'm married. I have two children. I'm already getting Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm a 37-year employee of Dominion Virginia Power. I've served in the city of Nick Foxer Grant Commission. I've also been on the school board for nine years as vice chair and chairman. Also, I've served one term in the city council. The main thing that I would just encourage you to remember me on election day is that I'm about communicating, I'm about transparency, and I'm about working as a team. Because we have to work together in order to turn things around. It is imperative that we work for the entire city of Portsmouth and that we do the council things that will bring, improve our image and to make us viable, powerful in the Hampton Roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Battle? Well, I'm here immediately to quality life assistance. I work at Portsmouth, about the police department, recreation department, retired from the RHA, won the first grant for what is called the HEB health care services, won the grant, Hope 6 grant, the main portion, which dealt with the demolition and revitalization of Jeffrey Wilson and Adam Carr. 266, first time we buy here. I have practiced what I preach. I'm here because it means a lot to me to improve the quality of life. And I'll say, we can be as big as any other city in the world. Consider, give me a vote if you would.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
I'm going to step out here, because I feel like I'm in a hole back there. I am Elizabeth Simmons, and I've been honored to serve as your councilwoman for 10 of the last 12 years. Currently serving as vice mayor by choice of my peers. I've worked hard to improve public safety in this community. I have their endorsement. I've worked hard to improve economic development in this community. I have the endorsement of the Hampton Roads Realty Association. I've worked on the arts. I've worked to improve our schools, because that, after all, is an economic development tool. It's not just about our kids and our future, but it's why business comes here. Bringing business to Portsmouth is what helps us to reduce real estate taxes. And our taxes are high, but I'm going to tell you, I voted eight out of the last 10 budgets to reduce taxes. They're not nearly as high as they were when Ray Smith and I came into office in 2004. I would like to continue to work for you. I have not embarrassed you. I have not embarrassed myself. I ask for your vote on November 8.
Thank you. And thank you all the candidates for the introduction and the grace in altering the voting order. We would be looking for question number two. And the manner in which we decide to rotate or revolve on selling exactly the same person starting first, we would be starting this time with Mr. Gudalde, Mr. Trovsky, and then come back. And the first question, now, is, if elected, what solutions would you propose to help enhance our transportation infrastructure for better connectivity to the regions?
Thank you for that question. In fact, I have been working as a citizen advocate for better transportation in the region. I regularly attend regional transportation planning organizations. And when the Hampton Roads Transportation Ability Commission came into me, I've been attending that as well. I believe that our future lies in increasing the number of people, four vehicles, rather than building a vast network of new infrastructure. I also believe in a vigorous public transit option within the region, as many other areas have. These things make best use of existing infrastructure. New infrastructure is very expensive. They're talking $12 million for the school solution to the Hampton Roads crossing. So that's a lot of money coming from this body.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, we have a transit problem, and not only recently, but in Portsmouth. A couple of agencies or organizations came to city council to report that they had lost bus service. And I did some research on it. And what is happening is, it was so complicated that I would have had an answer to my question. One of the problems we have is communication and representation. At the last CTAC meeting, the City Transportation Council commissioned, we had no representation. And thank goodness I was there to give information back to our mayor so he knew who we appointed did not attend the meeting. So yes, we have to communicate and tell each other what we need in our transportation, not only locally, but in the region. And we need our representation there and communicate with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
I too would promote for vigorous public transportation. But beyond that, I think that we need better representation at the regional level, because that's where a lot man, that we need to better communicate with our state legislators. The toll deal shows what happens when that doesn't occur. And even most recently, the projected presentation that was given for the third crossing would dump a lot of traffic into Portsmouth, which is not an acceptable solution for us. So we need better representation, stronger representation at the regional and state level to make sure that we don't give the short end of the stick like we did with the toll deal.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons.
I too would like to partner with our suburban cities. I think regionalism in this aspect is going to be an important aspect for us, because we could partner with other cities to see what kind of issues that we could come together to be useful in using resources for us. I know that there's some idea about the light rail, and if that's an opportunity, let us come to the table and work through the issues using our resources that would be available to get the job done. Of course, the AGR TPO commission is already in place, and I would like to ensure that we, you know, bring more education so that the entire community is aware of what that commission does and how it can impact our future going forward with our transportation issues as they stand today.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. One of the good things that we can say is that plans and money is already in place through our regional organizations as far as transportation, for short and long term. We were at the table, and we need to continue to be at the table to adhere our laws as the way it affects Portsmouth.
We have to stay at the table of light rail conversation. That's true. And we need to anticipate linking our city to the other cities through light rail. We have to continue to keep our streets in good shape. We have to meet with our communities and business leaders and let them put a strategy together on how the bus or the transportation system will best serve citizens and business communities. And we have to turn that back to the regional board. See, the regional board can be as effective as we can in violating that type of legislation.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Portsmouth is in a unique position as far as transportation infrastructure, because we are the center of the region, and the world is west. We also have the largest bit of port activity here in the city of Portsmouth, and so much of our transportation requirements are based on those eighteen-wheelers and the trains. So as VIG, the former APM terminals in the Churchill area gets ready to double its capacity, we're gonna have more trains, we're gonna have more trucks, we're gonna have more traffic. So it is imperative that we work on that regional level, particularly with our neighbors to the west, Chesapeake, Suffolk and beyond, because that traffic is coming, and we need to be prepared for it.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
I want to share with you that everything the citizens have said is definitely true. However, I want to deal with reality, because you know, and I'm not here to fight something that is right. However, I want to bring to your attention that when you talk about regional transportation, you're talking about money. Let's keep in mind, if we have that kind of money, we do complain about tax money. If there is any way possible to make it happen, I would go as far as I could possibly go as a City Councilperson to make it happen. Nevertheless, I would want to bring to the attention of the citizens of Portsmouth whether we can afford it at this time, with the things that we're all on in Portsmouth, with the taxpayers we are confronting. We have to be extremely careful before we decide something for, and not be sure whether we can pay for it.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Transportation is definitely an issue that we're facing, and it is something that we need to look on a regional basis, because transportation is not as combined with our limits. The expansion, just like right now, we have the new expansion of the MLK connector, which I believe is approximately six months ahead of schedule, which is beneficial to traffic. Obviously, we could, at the same time, we might lose customers that are just coming from Midtown Tunnel to 264 and beyond, and software testing somewhere else. Those are our concerns. Just like the citizens have stated about the Gateway Terminals, they're nowhere near the passing. I remember touring that facility before they even opened as a firefighter, looking at what was to come. And they're saying, once that gets some capacity, it's gonna affect almost a fifty-mile radius, thus being the center of it. That's even part of what they were talking about, doing the bypass out in Windsor, because that's gonna be affected that far out from the traffic coming from the terminals in our city. So that's something we need to work on, and work with our neighbors and all the other counties and cities that are in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. Question number three, which will come first to you. What areas of Portsmouth do you think present an opportunity for redevelopment and revitalization? And what do you think would be an appropriate approach for the city?
It depends on what you mean revitalization. I'm really kind of ho of definitions and words. I think all areas of the city are being done.
Thank you.
There are a lot of opportunities for revitalization. I think we could start with the waterfront. I'm not sure that the best use of the waterfront is to have government buildings sitting on the most valuable real estate that we have in our city. So that's where I would start. But there are a lot of areas. There are a lot of vacant lots all over the city. Some of them belong to the city, and they need to be marketed. Another area that comes to my mind is a league swap of land where the old Wilson High School used to be, behind Mary Lou Coswell. And we need to be reaching out to develop those areas in the city as well. Connect that Midtown area to the Downtown waterfront, so that we can have a revitalized city and move it even farther westward.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. I think the greatest tool that we use to revitalize the city of Portsmouth is to bring up destination. We need to work with developers across the city that will come in and help us to develop our underutilized land that we have, and create a destination that will attract new businesses, new residents and visitors to our city. I also believe that the business opportunity needs to be expanded, so that it is business-friendly for businesses to come to this enforcement, and creating more single-family homes, so that we have more people paying the real estate taxes, which would help to be an opportunity for revenue for the city.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. When you think about revitalization, that needs to be broad-based, based on age and our communities. We have a lot of our own communities. So that needs to work according to what's needed and how long it's been since any things have been done. There's some communities where it's been done, but there's communities that are being worked on as we speak. One of the focuses also needs to be our businesses. We need money, and in order to bring money, in order to be able to do things in the communities, we have to have that money. So we need to make sure that our businesses, downtown, midtown, Churchill, are looked at and revitalized, to make sure that they're open, attract the gateways to attract businesses. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, revitalization is definitely a way to go, if that's what you got in mind. But when you're dealing with a city, you have to look at the complete spectrum. We've had folk in the past that have witnesses come and say, well, come on, do you have a spot for me? That's placing things just wrong. That's not a chronological order. That's not the way you build cities. You build cities by sitting down, looking at the city there, one over section by section, where you're gonna have this, where you're gonna put that. You have to do it like that. You have to do it where people notice it. People know the Latin Mass, and people with imagination to put good things together, like man and man, or which one would did, things like that. Really stop thinking smart.
Ms. Simmons, we just picked up your voice. You were behind the point, and you heard Mr. Battle, didn't you? Did you hear him?
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Battle was right about planning and comprehensive planning, and so I'll take a minute of time to give a commercial from Del C Miles, who's here to help the citizens work on our comprehensive plan. This is something all cities do, including Portsmouth. And Portsmouth needs everybody's input. With the Economic Development Department Authority, we're looking at places like the Airline Boulevard north, that nine hundred thousand, twelve hundred block of High Street, which is a wasteland. Areas in Churchill, which need terrible, definitely redevelopment, where the old Kroger grocery store was. The Mass Center, way out in Churchill, where we touch the city of Suffolk. There's a lot of opportunity there. And of course, we still have industrial spots, for say, on the riverfront, some of the best in the region for those industrial uses. So there's a lot that can be touched, and we don't even have to talk about downtown.
Thank you. And Mr. Bill, your voice, we hear that one as well.
Thank you so very much. When we talk about developing our city, we must keep in mind that those people who already have many new facilities for a very long time, that's what we're trying to solve. So often, when we start developing cities in Portsmouth, somehow they focus towards the larger community. There, we have a problem, and then that's when the rest of them comes in. Everywhere, to know where the guys are, I would definitely want to get witnesses who live in the area, and get them, and perhaps my someone, who have expertise and understand that we have experienced enough in Portsmouth, all being here with a huge community. I'm all for developing, I'm all for moving Portsmouth, but I want to keep peace and harmony. That's one of the reasons we have a problem, because why wouldn't we play with this other people making racism, not racism, is basically what I'm saying.
Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. Revitalization, you know, geographically, we are the smallest city here in the area, but we shouldn't have put all our eggs in one basket. We need to look at the entire city, all various corridors, in the different neighborhoods. You know, we have, you know, several historical districts, trucks that open off of it. And we need to revitalize it as well. What we need to do is get collaboration with citizens that live in these communities, and we need to bring back, you know, collaboration, cooperation and pride, you know, some of these people. Some people might have heard the broken window theory, it's a community police internal. But I think we can do just the opposite of that. When you come back to a neighborhood, somebody makes their house look nice, and that's gonna invite their neighbors to make their yards look nice, do the flower festival or whatever. And I think we can do it in reverse and start getting cooperation. And, you know, we need to do revitalization across the city, and just strategically, from one city to the other, and not just in one community. Thank you.
Thank you. Revitalization, we can reduce the rate of redevelopment. If we keep our existing housing stock in good condition, then you don't have to tear down narrow buildings, and neighborhoods do not have to suffer, decay internally. So effective code enforcement is a significant contributor to the revitalization effort. The other thing is, we need low-interest loans to homeowners who have limited means. This will help them keep their property up. Lastly, there are areas where old businesses have left, and there are properties and buildings available for new businesses. We need to redevelop those on a priority basis.
Thank you. That brings us to the next question. Yes, thank you for the question. Ms. Rev will be the first to come. What solutions would you propose to help ease the impact of tolls on Portsmouth businesses?
I believe that we need to start looking westward, and we need to become the destination so that we don't have to worry about those tolls. Now, there's always gonna be people traveling through here, going somewhere else. But if we could concentrate on making our city the destination by doing things in the area of tourism, so that we became the destination, then we would be attracting a whole new group of people and not worrying about Norfolk and Virginia Beach that weren't there for us when we revived the toll battle. We also have the port here that is very strong in the city of Portsmouth, and that goods coming into our port can go westward, and we can become a hub for port activities. So those are some of the solutions to the toll problem. But we also need to make sure that we have a place at the regional table, so that we can mitigate those tolls, with all those tolls whenever the opportunity arises.
Thank you.
I believe my suggestion to the impact of the tolls will be to go back to our legislators in the Virginia General Assembly. We need to partner in, make sure that we're lobbying with our legislators to make sure that they can impact from their legislation that will help reduce the toll problem that they're already setting in place. But there may be an opportunity for us to go back to the referendum that was introduced some ten, fifteen years ago, where everyone came to the reduction of the tolls by a fuel tax, or some kind of cigarette tax, or some kind of way for everyone, not just Portsmouth, to pay into the tolls. Regionalism will be a big impact, but I think our Virginia legislators, legislators at the Virginia General Assembly will be helpful in that aspect as well.
Ms. Simmons.
Thank you. The answer to dealing with the tolls is at the state level. We have to, you know, work with our legislators to try to remediate the tolls. We have to do what we can. The perfect answer would be to eliminate them altogether, but we know that my honor would take that, given you have a fifty-eight-year plan. So we need to work with our legislators to try to remediate as much as we can, as to try to reduce it as soon as we can, to delay some of the tolls, and we need to continue to do that, even looking for federal funds to help reduce some of that money, so that we can do it. Portsmouth has got a power list to have available funds to try to do things. Businesses have tried to do some little things to help folks that come to do certain work with them, to do business with them. But that's not, it has to be at the state and federal level that we work to lower them and possibly in the long term, eliminate them altogether.
If it's lacking wine, it can be changed. There is a way to leading that one, the toll. But we have to have people courageous enough to dig it to their fire. We have to have a government that's strong enough to compete with those corporations and say, no. We have to move west. The tolls are there, yes, so we can concentrate on that. We have to get us a good seat for an excellent marriage in Suffolk and Chesapeake. We have the third toll that's coming through, I think they call it the Petrie Walk. That's gonna take a lot of big trucks. We have this round, I don't know, those businesses that's what they want, and they are catalysts. Thank you.
I agree with my colleagues that Portsmouth alone won't have the solution. It is a regional issue. The good news is that we now have a mayor in Norfolk who was one of the delegates who was courageous enough to support us, writing his files five or six years ago. He made his business available in Portsmouth for us to have meetings. He stood with Aaron Senators Lucas and delegate James and others to try to mitigate the effect of those tolls. This is why you need a strong city council and a strong mayor who can work with the regional players, the legislators and the governor. You cannot elect people who cannot work together that don't have the respect at the state level.
I've been told that we're not there, Mr. Lucas. Uh, Louie, back there, she can take a lot of tolls in the City Council, because she had some down there in the Jersey Center. So now, after the review was made, they went on a charge, and the toll, the tolls have been used for years. So, however, if there was any way possible that it could be corrected, I would do all my possible, but again, I'm not here to just struggle to get you to look for me. I don't want you to look for me, but I want you to know that I'm honest, that when we talk about the toll, that's something we might live with until we get someone to go back and correct, but it's already been done. This is why you need a strong city council and a strong mayor who can work with the regional players, the legislators and the governor. You cannot elect people, you cannot work together that don't have the respect at the state level.
I've been told that we're locked in. So it's these Lucas, uh, Louie, right there. She can take a lot of tolls and then have a city council because she had some down in Ohio at the Jersey Center. So now, after the reword was made, they went on a charge, a toll, a toll that was locked in for years. So, however, if there was any way possible that it could be corrected, I would do all my possible good. But again, I'm not here to just struggle to get you to vote for me. I don't want you to vote for me, but I want you to know that I'm honest. And when we talk about the toll, that's something we might live with until we get someone to go back and correct it. It's already been done, but it's already been done.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, I agree, this is, this is a reasonable effort that needs to be dealt with as far as the tolls. Because as it stands now, what we need to do, as the question stated, was reduce the impact on our businesses. So as the tolls stand now, like we're talking about Westwood and Suffolk, Holloway County and these other places. We need to attract these customers to come to our city, to our businesses, to spend their dollars in our cities. You know, I've heard it said one time that Portsmouth is the light of the tunnel and we need to project that out. So we have a lot of customers that can come to us that they don't need to come from Norfolk, they don't need to come from Virginia Beach. I was, I was at a toll radio station the other morning and a DJ was talking about they're looking at a new Aldi supermarket at Chesapeake Square. We had one here in Charleston, kind of street west. But the way he said on the radio, he said he never wanted to come to see that store because he didn't want to go with the tolls. There's not five miles between those two locations. So that's just not the geographic. He's willing to go to Chesapeake Square because it's going to high rise, but he didn't want to come to one in Portsmouth. So we need to, to market and put stuff out there so people will know more about it. Thank you.
We need to rethink the way we approach the transportation accountability commission money. Because when that commission was established, the tolls on the downtown, midtown tunnel were specifically excluded from action by the commission. I dropped an item into the legislative packet, suggestion box from the city council. That we put in our set of asks for legislature and they take out the exclusion. So that money that's already being collected from every one of us through a gas and a sales surcharge within the region could be redirected into buying out the tolls contract. Where the money is going, where we are going to get it in the long run is through annual escalator clause that's embedded in that contract.
And inside?
The regional meeting is really a big control issue on transportation projects. There's also transportation problems in the plane of the premium hour and the design of it, the cost of it. But we are not part of that council and it's affecting all of us. And that's my main concern is some of the things that Martha said, I only became aware of about the day when I went to a meeting.
Thank you very much. The first question is, the first question from audience contributions in the beginning of this conference. If elected, what do you believe will be your greatest challenge?
If elected, I think my greatest challenge will be to have our colleagues come together to sit down and come up with a united vision for the city of Portland. We're working with a diverse group of people that's gonna bring in various educational backgrounds and knowledge to the table. But we need to be able to put aside all our differences, come together and work on a vision that's gonna move Portsmouth forward. Black, white, green, whatever it takes, a council that will work together to make Portsmouth better than we have been in the past.
Thank you.
Without a doubt, it's very personal. It's about working together. It's about teamwork. It's about putting hidden agendas aside and sitting down and working through things. When I was on council, 2004, 2008, and as here in Elizabeth Mitchell, she was on the council with me. We worked effectively together. Were we perfect? Did we disagree? Yes, we did, but we did it off to the side, we did it, you know, in our little meetings. But we did our best to try to keep things down and cordial. Everyone does not have the aptitude, everyone does not have what it takes to work without, to become impersonal without them trying to slip in personal agendas. So we have to be an effective team. We have to put aside our personal idiocy, this is our personal problems. We have to lay those down. If you don't have the capability to do that, then you don't go on council.
Mr. Bell?
A lot of people in Fort Worth, and this is where I don't know anything about it, but all the time. But the most important things about this city is we're not necessary and we're not growing. But your smiles come to me when you elect me because we're looking at what we think is a great way to say it's not. Then I am like, the general assembly has already put a bill in for the state to take it over. It won't allow the Fort Worthers, it won't let it stay. And what Fort Worthers do, what I'll be doing for you is negotiating on your behalf. To save the state, I want eight million dollars a year taxes and I want cost of living increases as we go along. Because we can't stop you from taking it. They're gonna introduce it in the domain. And then we got all our, our, our state. But that's where your people's status at, we do, did that.
The challenge for any city council is working together. In my 10 years on council, I've worked with five different sets of city councils. Because every two years it changes. Every time you add one person to a council, it changes the whole dynamic. And I can tell you that the group I work with right now is like I've never seen. I have, there is no respect among members from members. They are rude to one another, they are rude to the public. And, and it, it makes everybody feel that way. It makes everybody uncomfortable and it's embarrassing to me and it's embarrassing to the citizens. And that's embarrassing to, to put Portsmouth in the region. We don't wanna be down for it to be the city government that yells at citizens and shuts them off. That's not what we are. So, so the struggle is to come together, to have a retreat, to have a vision and find the goal that our great management team can work on and make happen.
I don't know how to talk this fast, but when you give it a minute, I can do that. And I'm a preacher, you know, it takes a whole lot of time for us. However, let me share with you, the first thing I do, I would try to get the people of Fort Worth to trust the council. That's what we have in our heart. I've been around and I'm listening to the people. Our citizens do not trust our city council. There are too many problems that should not be. We're gonna have this agreement, but I just, it disturbs me when we make an issue so bad that we can't defend it unless we tie racism to it. Now, I'm talking frankly because this is what I do. And everything in Fort Worth is not racist. We have more good people in Fort Worth than bad, but only attempted to go on the bad end. So I'm saying the first thing I would do, I would try to get the people of Fort Worth to trust me. I would work with the city council. I'm not going in with an agenda. Let me make this more clear as I sit down. I don't have anything against Mayor White. I want to make that more clear. I don't have anything against Sheriff Watson, he's my friend. But I want you to know when something is wrong, I will call it wrong.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Well, I'll say this is gonna be my greatest challenge as a circular council is maintaining the pace that I've been doing in this election cycle. The reason I say that is because I think I should be out, continue to visit civic groups, continue to visit business organizations. Continue to visit all these communities and neighborhoods. Because I feel like I need to have my finger on the pulse of the community to know what the communities want and need and how they're gonna be voting for the citizens of the city. And that's what I will do because I don't think it's appropriate for me to come around and visit everybody just during election cycle and then you not see me again. So that is gonna be my biggest challenge because I will tell you that I will still be out visible in the community, you know, taking directions from the people that I serve. Thank you.
I feel that I am not fast, I agree. I believe the biggest challenge for me, as I see it, having been with many elected officials, is avoiding the dark side. My Jedi master training will be put to the test because I want to remain true to the principles on which I am running. And I have seen a lot of people who went in with an outlook, turn lazy, turn to the dark side of going all the way to getting one. I believe that the greatest service an elected official can be found is to be a responsible representative of the people he or she is elected to serve.
I think the greatest challenge for us will be getting a vision. In 2003, they made us have the initial faith that there was a comprehensive and sufficient enforcement. That, I think that will be the greatest challenge. And the way to manage it is coming up the comprehensive plan. And I think that will be a way to create a vision for all of us that will come together and help manage it.
Mr. Bell?
I believe the greatest challenge that I'll face if elected would be to be a voice to reestablish trust in the city of Portsmouth. The citizens right now do not trust council, the members of council do not trust one another. The staff and council have a level of mistrust. We need to reestablish trust. How do we do that? We do that by treating one another with dignity and respect. And as your elected person, I would remember that I work for you. So I listen to you and I bring your ideas forward. I would reestablish the five-minute speaking rule that was unanimously taken away in July of 2015 by our current city council. And I would listen to my fellow citizens by attending civic league meetings and being out in the community the same way that I am right now as I'm trying to be elected. So again, the reestablishing trust for me is the greatest challenge.
The next question, and a question from the audience, and will be first to you, Mr. Smith. What changes, if any, would you make in how Portsmouth manages its money?
I think that's a continuing problem. Portsmouth does fairly well, having been there before, in managing it. But we always need to be on our task and on our jobs as councilmen and even as a school board member. One of the things that we do and personally need to do is learn the budget. We need to know the budget. We need to know the capabilities that the citizens have. We often depend on the city manager and his or her staff or the superintendent of the case of the school board. When there are some things that we need to learn, we need to become students of the budget in order to speak intelligently as to what we can and cannot do. I think that's the one thing we need to do. I don't have any big issues with the city's budget, I do with the school board's budget. But that's some of the things that we all need to work together and try to iron out and work through. But we have to do it through communicating with one another and our staffs. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, let's talk about the budget. Budget is a very important element. All levels in here love our children. It means we'll do anything, you know. But when we go to vote, we don't hope who will look out for our children the way they should be looked out for during the budget. You know, scale back, actually. You know, scale back after school programs. You're saying, you know, your children looking like when our money went out of the house. Anytime we deal with a budget, we have to do education, safety and the youth first and foremost. And until we do that, to get the kids out of our, of our eyes for the children not to look the way we want them to do. We need to just look at our savings because we owe it to yours.
Thank you.
I took the question to mean actual financial management. And so my answer is this, I will continue to support orderly categorical funding to the school system in order to manage the funds. The, a court in Portsmouth suggested that was the best way to keep the hands on money and I agree with you. I will continue to vote against taking money out of the undesigned fund balance to pay for recurring items. I will support, coming up shortly, hiring a professional manager to manage over $200 million in retirement assets that the city now has. Based on pension obligation of the bonds that were floated a few years ago to shore up our retirement systems. All of these have an effect on our bond rating, our credit rating for the city, which has dramatically improved over the last five to six years.
And Mr. Blue?
One of the reasons I want to be sure that money is being used wisely, the reason I said that is I've been told that I've had some decisions that have not been lessened to the city and a school system and set up a proper funding. Therefore, it is probably city council, so I will be sure that money that we can ask for, money that we can lend to any group or any city that we can take. When we use wise policy, we're not, our partner, these department and every other activity of a city official that works for the city of Portsmouth. I want you to know that there are certain things that, that perhaps the city's going, that could be questioned. I will make it my business to make the citizens of Portsmouth, that is not in their best interest. That's how I will manage it.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest things about managing money in a city is transparency. Every citizen should be aware of what dollars are being spent where. So I think that is, that is a big part of it. I think that, you know, it's gonna be a fluid operation, which is based on funds and internal priorities, you know, as the council members work together. And the answer should be, what is in the best interest, interest of the city and citizens? And that should be the litmus test to put on everything when you talk about spending money that's coming in from the citizens' taxes. But wanting to make things that we can increase, and if we speak about our town's economic development, the more we put into that, the more businesses we bring in. The more funds we can bring in so that we can make some of these decisions easier. If you have the money to spread around certain areas, it'd be better off than it would be for everybody. So I think that's just a short answer at this time. Thank you.
Not wasting money is a great way to increase the amount of money you have to spend. And some of the things that waste money include failure to maintain your existing infrastructure. So when we allow buildings to deteriorate by not doing regular maintenance, that means that we will have to demolish those buildings and build new ones. It's a continuing cost to the citizens of the city. Our failure to maintain our food complex, which was finished in 1969, meant we now have $79 million worth of debt. Our failure to maintain an actuarially sound pension contribution ratio means that we now have $170 million in debt. These are things where anticipation enables you to save money and have more money in your own budget.
We had a finance commission when councilman, God's name, was living and working with the city. We had a finance commission. And I think we need to re-implement that finance commission that before any property would take over the package, that it has to go through the finance commission. And anytime like
And anytime, like any department that deals with money, the finance commission needs to oversee how they are working. It really needs to be a finance commission to look at the revenue coming in and expenses coming out. So that's why I suggest a finance commission.
I believe that a budget is the ultimate value statement for any organization in government. So a good budget starts with a good plan and a good vision, and should flow from that plan and that vision. So that's why the upcoming review of the comprehensive plan is so important to our city moving forward. The most important thing that council probably does is to pass the budget. But the council doesn't create the budget in a vacuum. The budget should be created, and it should start with the citizens. We work for you, it should reflect your values and our city's values. So it's critical that we have a process in place that allows that to happen. And then beyond that, we just can't spend money that we don't have.
Yes, the changes that I would make to manage the money in the city of Portsmouth would be to begin with a budget review, either biannary or quarterly, with the city manager and the finance department to ensure that we weren't trapped with the funds that were allocated to for use. I would next think of looking at hiring an auditor. We have an auditor in the past, but we needed an auditor to ensure that those funds are being allocated appropriately and correctly. And I would also like to take a look at combining the resources in the budget line items that we have in the school board and the city of Portsmouth, we have positions that are being duplicated, we need to, human resource director, you know, we need to, in this allocation. So taking a look at combining positions where there are implications, where we can come up with one position.
Now, my friends, we have reached the dramatic moment where we will hear again from all the candidates. We will hear closing statements, and we will hear them again in person, starting with citizens who drew the man to come to town.
Thank you so much, and thanks to all of you for coming out on a Saturday morning. You know that I have been accessible to you, accessible to the media. I've stated positions on consolidation of services to cut waste or spending. I championed a move to fire the auditor that didn't audit. I'm still championing a move to eliminate the illegal $1,500 fine rule, so that government is more open and transparent to you. I've been endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police, Sheriff Watson, former sheriff of Rogers, the International Association of Firefighters, Level 539 Act, the Teachers' PEA Act, the Hampton Roads Realtors Act, and the People for Portsmouth Act. The only endorsement that really matters now is from you, the citizens. I ask for your votes on November 8th. Thank you.
I might as well give you your vote, that would be outstanding. I bring a change to the table through a greater variety of experience that is probably you've never seen before. I'm a business person in this city. I have forty to forty-eight employees at all times. I have three licenses by the state to provide services for folk with disability. I have a music company for kids, company with the police department to help them with their other streets and to learn new things, get involved with dancing in their life. And I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, dear, for this opportunity to represent our platforms. I just wanted to make sure that my, you know, my theme is trans, communications transparency and integrity. I bring in a vast amount of experience as far as management of people, management of money. I've been a manager, I've been managing Dominion since 85. I also work with Dominion lobbying Richmond and Washington DC. I was also endorsed by Hampton Roads Realtors Association. I keep a humble mind, I don't hold grudges. I operate in power for the Holy Spirit, which enables me to see things in a different way. But that inner pushover the door man that stand up for us right, and you can be assured and guaranteed that, you can count on me to do that, to look across the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm running this for council because I want to be that person who will work with council colleagues to help improve our negative image through advocacy for our economic development authority issues, helping our families to become better served in our community through better wages and benefits, and improving our school system that will create programs that will create stellar opportunities for students for success after graduation. My business experience in the community, I'm the executive director of the US Lodge Program to provide services to those individuals. I understand dignity and respect for all human beings. My business experience in the community, working with the Economic Development Authority, where I have been a commissioner for the past ten years. I want to continue that work to ensure that business retention is at the forefront, forefront. And I will work with council colleagues to ensure that we have the image of Portsmouth that will last forever.
Thank you so much for this opportunity again, and thank you for coming out on a Saturday morning to hear all of us. I've hoped to become a city councilperson to serve you. I believe that service is the pillar of any life, and that we need to serve others. This is the way that I've chosen to do this, is to ask for your vote on November 8th, in terms of ability, transparency, and accountability to the process of poverty in Portsmouth. So I ask for your vote on November 8th.
One of the things I want you to know about me is this, I care about people and their needs. If anyone has a need that's not being handled, I will help by making them heard. If someone will assist them, believe those means. I am sure you have noticed by now, my caring and compassion I have for you. My service as your elected would always be reflected in my honest and open communication style. I want you to trust me and know that I will keep my word. I want you to feel free to raise concerns about any issues, even if you need to give me feedback on how I'm performing as your elected. Elect me on November 8th and let us begin with them together. We can do if I stand up for what's right and do in our duty as good citizens of Portsmouth. If you are ready, let down a sign on November 8th, and we can begin our conversation and build relationships.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for being interested in better government. You know, what all is said and done will normally be said and done, but I've been busy over these last twenty years here. I've been to more city council meetings than any person on this dais. I have been to regional meetings, I've been up to Richmond. I have been studying, evaluating, listening, and proposing solutions to legislators and decision makers at all levels. I want to do that for you. I want to be your eyes, ears in those meetings of city council. I want to be your voice on the dais. So help me to help you. We can't say everything, we have the time we've been allotted. I have a website, I have some flyers in my back table, watch for my ads, and there's a journal I, and we should be getting some money.
Thank you everyone for listening to us today. I'd like to say I have dedicated my life to helping others to the best of my ability. I have taken oath to protect my city, my state, and my country. And like I, I'd like to share, this is something I'm very proud of, and so I'll just read off this. And this is a list of endorsements that I have received through my campaign this time. In an alphabet of order, it's the Fraternal Order of Police, Lot 20, Hampton Roads Realtors Association, Mark Luther King Jr., Leadership Steering Committee, People from Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Educational Association, Portsmouth Professional Firefighters, Level 539, the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office, and the Virginia Professional Firefighters. And I would be honored if I could add the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce to that list. So I just thank everybody for coming out today, thank you very much.
And in this time, on behalf of believing in others, I thank you all and all the candidates for today and all your efforts for good government.